I will open this study session of the city council to offer time to further review the proposed 2021 budget. This study session provides the council with an opportunity for discussion outside of the regular council meeting and an opportunity to dig a bit deeper on a specific topic. I should also note that Mayor Corbett is not with us this evening and Deputy Mayor Bacon is calling in, so I will be guiding the study session and our regular meeting this evening. I believe Counselor Tilton Byrne is also calling in this evening. With that, I will turn it over to City Manager Paul Prizino to introduce our topic.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmembers, tonight Jake will give a quick overview of the 2021 budget as presented here a week or so ago, as well as the capital improvement plan and the fees for 2021. August 11th is an additional budget session that could be held on any topics the council should desire to discuss further after tonight's meeting. Tonight Jake will focus primarily on the 2021 budget, I'm sorry, the 2021 capital improvement projects as well as the fees. The capital improvement plan, for those people watching at home, is a 10-year fluid plan that considers future expenditures with projected revenues. For the foreseeable future, our finances only allow for a maintenance plan with little room for any new projects. This year, staff had to revamp the entire document and add additional identified facility maintenance costs of $1 to $3 million per year for the next 10 years, and that's based on that facility maintenance plan that was presented here just a few months ago. Staff had to cut millions to make this plan work. Creative financing efficiencies, prolonging large purchases is all part of the plan. However, in future years, you'll see here on the document before you, we are short running into 2026, '27. We hope to augment this shortage with either grants or city council financial priority funding funds in the future, but that discussion will happen as we get closer to that date. The plan contains a list of large organizational needs that are eliminated but are noted for future, should future funds ever become available, and that's noted on the side of this capital improvement plan. The lessons learned throughout this process to ensure that we're properly planning for the maintenance of the public's investment and understanding ongoing costs of any project to assure a sustainable future. Not until 2028 can the city afford new projects. In 2028, prior commitments that consume one-seventh of our revenue or roughly 15% of the total revenue will allow us the capacity to fund many of the organizational needs that have been put off for some time. And also note that at that point in time, the debt also is reduced. We have a policy internally that requires us to stay within 30% or below of our debt, and that's compared to our revenue. So you'll see once again there in 2028, that's when that drops off. So if you look at the screen before you, this is just a cross segment of three main areas that I'd like to talk real quickly about, and Jake will talk mainly about 2021. First of all is our outside agencies. 2021, but more importantly, 2022, the following year, is when we start our PAC payments, roughly $900,000, and our payments to the hospital of $100,000. That's roughly $1 million to outside agencies. And I want to make perfectly clear that by making that statement, I do value the PAC and that improvement, but the council and the public should understand that that has bound us for the foreseeable future to add additional large projects to our budget. The debt service, you'll note, is roughly $2 to $1.5 million for the foreseeable future until 2028, when that outside agency payment drops off. If you look down there at the very bottom, our main revenue sources come from sales tax and other areas, but that debt-to-revenue ratio at about 27% to 28% doesn't drop until 2028. Once again hamstringing us. More importantly, I think it's imperative that we recognize, once again, that we added $1 to $3 million every year of maintenance to this budget, but our department heads went forth and cut about that throughout this entire budget to make things work, and it's imperative that we do take care of those items that we have before us, or that we currently have today. At the end of the day, the CIP plan takes care of what we have. Much like the rest of the budget, it's a bare-bones budget. It's a maintenance budget for the next eight years. The great part of having limiting funds, limited funds, it allows us to properly plan. Prior to 2028, council will need to have critical discussions about community investments. One discussion that will need to occur sooner is how to finance the renovations or development of a new police station, and that'll be coming before council here within the next year or two. I encourage council to continue to advance our community, but always look to the future as a sustainable one by asking necessary questions. With that, turn it over to Jake to start the dialogue on the 2021 capital improvement plan.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Just start with a little bit of background of where we are. So on the July 14th workshop, we did a budget overview. We went through the operating budgets as well as did an initial look at the outside agencies. Here we are on the 28th. We're going to go through the 10-year capital improvement plan as well as updates to our consolidated fee schedule. We have the August 11th workshop as an optional available for council-driven discussion and see where that may take us after today's discussion. The formal adoption process for the 2021 budget will be a first reading anticipated Callers on the phone, if you could, please mute yourself so we avoid getting feedback. August 25th is the first reading of the budget ordinance. The September 8th was anticipated to be the second reading of the budget ordinance, adoption of the consolidated fee schedule, as well as adoption of the 10-year capital improvement plan. That does build in the September 22nd city council meeting as a contingency date. That would be available if we need to do a third reading, given there were any changes in the budget process as we were to move forward. Here's a high-level overview of our agenda for tonight's workshop. We'll recap a little bit from the operating side of things as well as the other funds, then as you'll notice, we'll really do the deeper dive tonight into the capital improvement plan and then finish up with the consolidated fee schedule, hopefully leaving time for questions on the presentation materials from tonight, as well as anything that council may desire to discuss from our previous workshop. So these are just some of our highlights that we covered from the 2021 budget as a whole. As a reminder, this is a balanced budget both from the general fund and the CIP. City staff is projecting negative sales tax growth for 2021. As a result of that, we did reduce about $300,000 of the general fund, resulting in a lean and streamlined bare-bones budget, as City Manager Brizino has mentioned. Staff went through this and made strategic cuts to limit long-term impact. To do that, we avoided long-term facilities and infrastructure cuts. Again, there was slight increases even in the information technology budget as we tried to shore up our cybersecurity and protect our most valuable assets. Big change in this budget year again was moving the liquor fund from the general fund into the liquor fund, the liquor pass-through into the liquor fund. Again, this is an intuitive budget. One of the ways staff has worked to improve that is by taking the non-departmental expenditures down and moving those into the departments where the expenditures lie. Overall, this is a sustainable budget as it is balanced both in the general fund and the CIP. This is a slide from last time, just showing the budget at a glance. City council may notice that the 2021 budget has increased by about $40,000 from last meeting. That was just as a result of finalizing the capital improvement plan that we'll be discussing here tonight. Overall, the total budget is about $1.2 million less from 2020, still at a 2% decrease. So even with that $40,000 increase, that is on a $54 million budget generally immaterial. As a reminder, general fund is your primary operating fund. That includes your police, fire, public works, community development, engineering, so on and so forth. The special revenue fund increase is attributed to the special assessment project and as well as storm drainage projects, and the enterprise fund decrease, once again, is attributed to some major capital projects happening this year in the airport, as well as this new south construction at the landfill. With that, we'll move on to the new material for tonight, which will be our capital improvement plan. Starting with some of the highlights of this, you'll notice as City Manager Brizino mentioned, starting in 2022 until about 2027, we take on nearly another $1 million per year in the PAC payments that we are obligated to. As City Manager Brizino said, that is an investment into the community, but it does decrease our available funds for other capital improvements throughout the community. Again, this is a maintenance and replacement budget. What that means is this budget takes care of existing assets and infrastructure. We're not looking to add any new pieces of equipment or materials at this time, just really focusing on taking care of what we already have. To make this budget a reality, over the next 10 years, staff did cut about $6.5 million, which is nearly the equivalent of one full year of capital expenditures to present to you the budget that we have tonight. Another project that we're looking at, taking on a more innovative and creative fashion to further aid those cuts, is an LED lighting conversion and doing that through a guaranteed energy savings contract. By doing it in that manner, that again takes about another $1.2 million out of upfront capital expenditures that we would have to fund through this plan, and that again all leads into the bigger picture of making sure that we're passing sustainable, long-term balanced budgets. This budget, similar to the general fund, is intuitive in that we try to lump this into major categories. There are just a number of revenue sources and again try to tie those directly to our expenditures, and again as putting forth a balanced budget, it is sustainable for the long term. This is the capital improvement budget at a glance. You'll notice that the revenues are on the right and the expenditures are on the left. As you may notice initially, there is about $100,000 surplus anticipated. That'll play into the long-term balancing of this budget, as it was briefly alluded to in kind of our introductory or opening slide. As you'll see, about 86% of our expenditures are accounted by debt service, street, airport, and parks and recreation. For the sake of this, the parks and recreation does include the library, which does have some significant capital expenditures in terms of facilities that we'll be discussing here a little bit later. The bulk of the revenue really comes from your second penny sales tax, about 73%, and that number that you'll see, 6.9 million, directly mirrors the first penny sales tax that funds our general operations. So again, we get 2% sales tax, the first percent goes into our general fund for our operations, the second percent comes into our capital improvement plan to fund the majority of this plan before you tonight. The remaining portion of the revenue for 2021 is your tax increment financing and your city council priority funding is being recommended to be utilized to balance the capital improvement plan, and on the next side, we do have more detail on the revenues and expenditures. So again, that 6.9 million of your second penny sales tax, recapping that, that is just the second penny from the sales tax that goes into this account. We put our tax increment financing revenue into this account because as we, in the past, pay for capital improvement, TIF projects, what ends up happening is as we front the cash for the TIF project out of our capital improvement plan, and then when that money comes back in through the increment, we replenish that and we're able to then take on those capital expenditures. So TIF revenue, we front that through the capital plan, it replenishes over time with the increment, and then we're able to utilize that revenue to fund capital expenses. The remaining piece then is the city council priority funding at 1.4 million to make up the balance of the revenue there. As far as the expenditures go, this slide just provides a general breakdown of the expenditures at a high level. Most of these expenditures, we'll get into in a little bit more detail, but we will go through a few of them here on this slide that are a little bit more straightforward and kind of lumped in just a couple of expenses there. So the outside agency is about $100,000 or is $100,000 for 2021, and that is just the first contractual payment for the PAC expansion. Again, $100,000 2021, that will go up to that $917,000 number starting in 2022 through 2027. Debt service, couple of the more notable projects that we've done recently that we utilized debt financing for were the Bob Sheldon renovation, that's currently underway, and then the Larson Ice Arena project from last year. We do still have some additional sources of debt from the past that are included in that debt service payment, including some of the tax increment financing projects we've done, as well as even this facility that we're in today from, I believe that was 2010. Swiftell Center Capital Projects, the bulk of those really are made up by video screen and riser payments, so those are pieces of equipment that we've had, and we just have a year-over-year payment for that. The riser payments, I believe, actually goes back to the landfill, that was fronted through that, and then the video screen was through a private loan. Service area paving is about $100,000 of their capital expenditure requests for this year. The service area is located between the Larson Ice Arena and the Swiftell Center itself. It's a high-traffic area from the Larson, or the Swiftell to the Blue Ring for cattle shows and things of that nature, so it's important that that is in good condition to move trailers and different pieces of equipment through. Another significant expenditure from the Swiftell Center is anticipated to be a new floor scrubber, and again, that's critical in their operations for moving events in and out. I know that just through some equipment failures, they've had to actually squeeze you the entire floor by hand, which, as you can imagine, is quite an undertaking for a facility of that size. Getting into the more detailed expenditures, the first one I'll look at is our public safety, which is really comprised of our police and fire. So the police is, police is planning to replace two or three vehicles for next year. Two of those are marked, one of those are unmarked. Again, those are not new vehicles, those are vehicles that have reached the end of their useful life and will just be replacing existing equipment. Fire vehicles, we have an engine one replacement. This is one that we've actually started already at this point, and then that $95,000 is just a payment on that engine that we're anticipating to take ownership likely yet this year. The remainder there that you'll see is $70,000 for fire facility, and that's going to complete the south training site. This is a three-year project that was originally budgeted at $45,000 per year. We did do some cutting back this year due to COVID. That $70,000 really is the balance from this year and then next year's allocation to finalize that project, which will really be a great resource for our volunteers to make sure that they are staying current on their skills for firefighting. Parks and Recreation, about $390,000 of this is for vehicles and equipment. Again, the bulk of the expenditures there are for a boom truck as well as a chip truck, about $310,000 between those two vehicles. Park Facility, we have the Southbrook Restrooms rehabilitation, which is about $100,000 project, and then a pool heater replacement, which was part of the condition analysis at about $38,000 on that. At the ice arena, we're looking at replacing the aging and past its useful life Olympia with a Zamboni for taking care of the ice in between games and practices, and then the remainder of that is for a rubber flooring and a rooftop unit at about another $100,000. The library, you'll see, is included in parks and recreation for the sake of this analysis, and that is about $765,000. Nearly $700,000 of that is for a full-scale HVAC rooftop unit replacement there, and then there is some other minor expenses for cabinet heaters and then removing and repairing where the juice bar used to be upstairs and now has since been removed. So it's just taking out the cabinets that have been replaced and then creating restoration on the wall and such. Golf course, really the bulk of that, again, about $140,000 is for regular replacement of some mowers, and then the remainder, $25,000, is for the safety netting that goes between the driving range and one of the playing holes, so that netting is critical in protecting players from driving range golf balls to ensure the safety of players. The public art 1% for next year comes out to just under $62,000, and that excludes the debt service outside agency funding and sinking fund, but then that does, 1% does apply to all remaining capital expenditures within this account. Street and Airport Vehicles, you'll see about $530,000 up there, a big chunk of that again, a dump truck for $200,000, a payloader for $200,000 as well. So again, that's just replacing equipment that has passed its useful life. The sidewalk curb and maintenance project next year is anticipated to take place on Third and Fourth Street, and then we have our annual chip seal project, our annual overlay project, and then the Larson Park parking lot is actually in very similar condition to the Bob Sheldon lot that's being renovated as part of the project this year. So again, a park that's in, parking lot that's in pretty rough shape and seeing more use with the redesign of the disc golf course this year. Airport makes up a portion of that at about $115,000. Again, we had a very large apron reconstruction project in the current year, much smaller projects next year, looking at a mower, again, annual painting and chip ceiling that we take on, and then a smaller pavement maintenance port, pavement maintenance project that will have a city portion, but again, the bulk coming from intergovernmental funds. So as City Manager Brizito had stated before, to kind of get to where we are, and as I had mentioned too, we did pull out about $6.5 million of departmental level reductions. The table up on, up there before you is what accounts for that $6.5 million number. As I had briefly mentioned, another savings of about $1.2 million is looking at an LED lighting conversion through a energy savings contract, which again, benefits the city by not having to provide any upfront capital and protects the funds that we have available in our capital improvement plan. Decision that will not necessarily need to be made by any means tonight, but again, is on the horizon, is the future of our police facility. Very preliminary numbers indicate that. To renovate the current facility would be about a $6 million project. New construction would be in the neighborhood of $12 million. Again, very preliminary, but that is a large expense that would be on the horizon. To combat this, staff is always monitoring and exploring opportunities, whether that be grants, one-time opportunities, whether that be through donors or different funding sources such as the LED lighting conversion, energy savings contract, as well as looking at alternative service and program delivery, which we engage in with our outside agencies and partners in the community. Again, this is just a snippet of the previous slide that you saw, looking at the bottom line. As you'll see, the way this program is structured at present, '21 through '24, really is operating at a surplus, but really we're carrying that over, recommending to carry that over every year to really buy down those deficits that we see in '25 through '27. And a big chunk of the '25 overage that you're seeing there, we do have about $1.5 million for Swiftell HVAC replacements, so that's a very large project that is contributing to a little bit of that overage there. '26 and '27, just did a quick review on there, and again, there's just a number of different vehicles and facilities. There's a fire and street vehicles that contribute to that, and then well as facility upgrades and repairs to the Swiftell, Larson Ice Arena, library, and fire. So nothing necessarily specific, but again, it's a number of different facilities, and as City Manager Brizino said, that McKinstry analysis illuminating the condition of our facilities did increase our budgets by that $1 to $3 million almost every year with planned maintenance repairs. Shifting gears a little bit, just want to go through some of our high-level changes on the consolidated fee schedule, as well as provide a little bit of history on what this document is. So the consolidated fee schedule was created as part of the 2020 budget. Historically, what the city had done is would pass these fee resolutions and had different resolutions outlining fees for whether it be fines and forfeitures, parks and recreation, and they kind of lived as disparate documents that, you know, members of the community as well as staff would have to pull together when it was time to review them. By creating the consolidated fee schedule, we put all of those fees into one convenient location. It assists staff by creating regular analysis, but also members of the public, developers, so on and so forth, by being able to regularly see and easily find where our fees are and what they're currently set at. Part of the direction given to city staff is that we review this fee schedule quarterly. As a reminder, council may remember, back in January, we brought some updates regarding the PDDs as, Plan Development Districts, as some updates were made in that, in that regard, and then most recently, at the end of May, we brought the electric vehicle charging station rate proposal to city council. Just behind the scenes, every time that we update these fees, we look at them comprehensively as a staff, so we never want to do a one-off fee change. We want to give the opportunity to bring those fee changes quarterly as needed. Going forward for this year and how we approach the budget process, the direction given to the department heads is a comparative analysis, so looking at our peer communities to see what they're changing, are charging, and then making sure that we're following in line with market trends, but then also focusing on cost recovery in some cases for the different services that we provide. Of course, our cost recovery at the public pool is a very different model than the cost recovery that we may have at the landfill or an enterprise fund. Some new fees that you'll see this year are located at the airport, just different ways of applying fees to the operations of the airport. Engineering added a sidewalk and curb ramp inspection program. You'll see what looks to be a change in the police fees, but really they're just mirroring some changes that were done at the state, so we added an additional category there. Some fees were increases, increased this year. Building permits just hadn't been upped in a number of years, so again, looking at our peers, we had fallen slightly behind there, so wanted to update ourselves and the market there. Parking fines generally went up about $5 across the board. Court costs were increased at the state level, so you'll see a lot of changes in our fines and forfeitures, but the vast majority of that, again, those court costs go directly to the state. The city doesn't receive any of that revenue. Again, a couple other fees were increased within there. On the decreasing side, we got rid of the yard waste bag, so as we've gone to the cart program, we've decreased the yard waste bag fee down to zero, and that will be removed. And then our airport landing fees, they look like they've been decreased, but again, with some of the new additions and some operational changes, they're going to collect some fees directly as through as our, instead of through our fixed base operator. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions on the materials tonight, or if we have the desire to go back to materials from the previous workshop.
Council, do you have any questions for Jake? Or are councilors on the phone, do you have questions for Jake?
I have one.
Councilmember Brink?
Yeah, did I see that correctly, Jake? There's no increases to the city council priority funding after 2022 or 2021?
That is correct. Yeah, but this time, we've got, just kind of, this goes back to a workshop that was held with city council, I believe, in February of this year. At that time, staff did recommend about $1.7 million of city council funding for 2021. Part of the reduction that you're seeing here is a little bit of timing, but again, going to those LED conversion and different opportunities there. But yeah, after 2022, there would be no use of the city council priority funding.
Okay. I would note on that, though, that we always replenish city council financial policy projects, usually sometime in February, once we've closed the books in January, kind of have an idea of what we should have. It's around that February timeframe, you can expect us to come back with what you should have in that balance and then recommendations. What's tough this year is we have COVID, and so we've put everything kind of on the side in the back burner, still not knowing what's going to happen next year. It might still be kind of an ongoing discussion, but our hope is, especially for the newest council members to know that haven't been part of this, this city council financial policy project is fairly new, we just started this last year. The whole intent is that council should know exactly how much money we have available, and council should set the priority of those existing additional funds that we have available. So hopefully in February, we can bring that back.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was actually more detail about that LED conversion project. Can you just explain that a little bit more for me, what's involved in all of that, where will those be?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're still working on the logistics of that to finalize it, but in the, kind of a brief overview of that is, so what a company, you do is you go out for a request for proposals process and you hire a consultant or a contractor, they're, it's an ESCO, energy savings contractor, and what the company actually do is they guarantee your energy savings through audits, so they'll come in and go through all the facilities that we're looking to go to LEDs, and they'll say, okay, we will guarantee that you're going to save on your energy bill $75,000 a year, just for, you know, a rough number. And then what happens is they'll come in and then at no cost to us, we have to, you know, they'll come through and do all the replacements, and then we utilize those energy savings to pay off that project over the life. So it usually is, I believe the state law is a 15-year replacement cycle or recovery cycle on that, so we would just use our guaranteed energy savings. And the reason they're guaranteed is that through multi-factor, you know, confirmation, they'll run different audits and analysis to make sure that we're actually seeing those savings, and we will verify it as well on our own. If, for whatever reason, it comes in that we only saw $70,000, the company actually writes you a check to cover the difference, so they'll always make sure that they're proving and we're finding value of $75,000 if that's the number every year.
And how many of our facilities would be, do you think, viable for that? Like everything, or?
Pretty close. It would be the Swiftell, the Larson, the Activity Center, the library, the street shop, so it is the vast majority of them. Pretty much anyone that don't have LEDs currently would be included.
Nick? How are we doing on this year's CIP? Are we, have we pushed things off and they're listed in amongst this? And then is 15th and 7th, we still have, are we still on budget for that?
So I will break that down into two parts. 15th and 7th, I'll probably ask Jackie to come up in a second, but I know Eric is on the phone, so I would let him talk to the current year capital plan and how we've mitigated our expenses and where we stand right now.
Let's hear from Eric on the phone.
All right, Jake, I'll start. Yeah, I'll start. This is Eric. Hello, everybody. So the same as with the general fund budget, we preempted some declines in revenue and we adjusted our budget around 20% to 25% down, and so what we are going to do, since revenues are tracking higher than expected, we're going to get back together at the end of August and reprioritize the project and see what we can still bring back this year. In addition, we will evaluate every year the carry forwards to next year in case we still have available funds and the work couldn't get done this year.
Thanks, Eric. Jackie?
Hey. For an update on the 15th Street South project, we have projected that, we have an updated engineer's estimate from our design engineer, and between the drainage fund and the existing cash and the assessment fund, we do have enough to cover that project, and so we're just waiting, you know, to work out the final details with landowners, but we do have it budgeted. If things come through, it could be bid in 2021, you know, if we get all the details worked out, but we do have enough funds. get all the details worked out, but we do have enough funds, based on the current engineer's estimate.
Thanks, Jackie. Councilmembers, do you have additional questions for Jake or another member of the staff?
Yes, I have one more, can you, can someone remind me, with the PAC payments, is that a legally binding contractual obligation that we made, or?
I'll take that on, this is Eric again, and, and I think it was about three or four years ago, the, the city does have a note payable with the donor, and it is that contractual obligation for the, until 2027, right now.
And, and I would also mention that it does impact our debt capacity as well, for the next, well, eight years as well, and, and Eric, that's correct?
That is correct, it is also something that we could renegotiate if possible, if available.
Councilmember Collins?
Is it possible somehow to pay that off early, the money that goes through the PAC and that also goes to the hospital?
Eric, do you want to take that one?
Well, it, it is, this note is a zero interest note, and so, financially, in terms of like saving interest, it wouldn't make sense to pay it off before any of our other debt commitments. We could potentially use city council priority funding to pay some of that as well, but that, that would be in place of other projects that are being considered for that as well.
A good, good point, Eric, that since it is zero interest, we'd be better off paying off, for instance, the debt to the city building, which is at a higher interest rate, that way, we can save additional money in the future, so that is an option to pay off debt as a premise or an idea, rather than just the specific item.
Councilmembers Bacon or Tilton Byrne, do you have any questions for Jake?
No.
Jake, I had just one question about debt service, I noticed that after the current or fiscal year 21, our debt service total decreases by over $1 million, what debt is retired, I assume that's the retirement of a pretty significant project, do you recall what that is?
I believe that would be the 2010, but I will defer to Eric on that as well. Eric, we are deferring to you.
I'm sorry, I was muted, yes, Jake is correct, it is a combination of the 2010 bond that goes away, and as well as the payment for the CRC building with the county, that also go, those will go away in 2022.
Thanks, Eric.
No problem.
Any other questions for Jake or another member of the staff?
Maybe not a question, but just a comment, I mean, again, this is a really lean budget, right, and I think it's just really important that that is emphasized in the community, and that everyone understands that there's not going to be lots of funding for extra or new projects.
Jake, did you have any other notes to share with, with the council?
No, that was it.
All right. I think that wraps up this evening's budget session, we will be reconvening for a regular meeting at 6 o'clock in this room. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Will the city clerk please take attendance?
Councilmembers, would you please respond with "present," as we are all not in the same location this evening? Bacon? Brink?
Present.
Collins?
Present.
Niemeyer?
Present.
Tilton Byrne?
Present.
Wendell?
Present.
Bacon? Councilmember Bear Bacon, are you on? We'll just wait and see if she joins.
I should note, before we move into the agenda, that Mayor Corbett is not able to join us this evening, and Councilmember Bacon intended to call in online, and she serves as our deputy mayor, so I have the privilege of guiding this evening's agenda. Item three is the approval of the consent agenda, any item listed on the consent agenda may, by the request of any single council member, be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda section of the agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda by the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Collins?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and remove items 8A, 8B, 8C, and 8D, and put them on a future study session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded by Councilmember Collins to remove items 8A, 8B, 8C, and 8D from this evening's agenda, and put them on the agenda of a future study session. We have a motion and a second, are there any questions from the council?
No, just, I'll just comment that, since I'm new to this, I want to make sure that I know the history of it, what we've done in the past, the criteria, I want to make sure that they're met with everything, and I also want to think, talk about how this will affect the future of Brookings, you know, how many lottery machines do we actually want in Brookings, so, I'd like to visit about those things.
Any other comments or questions?
This is Holly, and I would-
Patty has joined.
Um, this is Holly, and I would just add to that, that I, I realize that the state regulations around this permitting process of permits around these machines are kind of specific, and there are certain limitations that, that the council may or may not have in order to really look at, at whether or not we would allow these permits, and so, I think a study session would be appropriate, so that we can dig into what those state statutes are, and, and better understand exactly what the parameters are that we as a city can look at, and possibly any boundaries that we set around that process.
Are there other questions or comments from councilors?
I guess I would just note, as a comment, that to me, it seems challenging to have to make an example for this particular issue with an applicant who's applied and has submitted everything that they needed to do, based on the rules that we have today, so I feel like it would be appropriate to study the issue, but I don't necessarily know that it, I would tie it to this particular application, I would prefer to go through those agenda items tonight, but yet, we could have a study session on video lottery in our intention moving forward, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that.
Council, any other-
I have a comment, but it's, this is Patty, different from Leah's request, but I didn't get in on the beginning of Holly's comments, if we didn't bring up the fact that other cities have adopted ordinances, I would like for staff to be able to bring those to us, so we can take a look at what other cities have done dealing with this issue.
Councilmember, I would just note that we do have a regular scheduled work session for August 18th, so what we would do is probably go ahead and move that to that date, provide whatever information council should request tonight, and provide a little background and history on that, as well as the ordinances that Patty requested as well.
Can I ask for clarification? If we were to move a conversation around video lottery to a study session in August, would we then have to schedule a subsequent meeting, of course, to take up this potential, these potential items, that would not happen at the study session or at an adjoining meeting that same night?
Correct, right now, I think the motion on the floor is to go ahead, postpone these items, have a work session to discuss the details of how the video lottery works here in South Dakota, educate the council, make sure that everyone's well aware of the process, and then, at the next following meeting, probably bring that back for a vote.
Thank you, any other questions or comments from councilors, before we vote on Councilmember Collins' original motion? Councilmember Collins' motion was to remove items 8A through D from this evening's agenda, and schedule them for a future study session, city clerk, please call the roll.
Brink?
No.
Collins? Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So now, we would be approving the consent agenda with an amended version of the agenda included, I would entertain a motion to approve the new consent agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilor Tilton Byrne, seconded by Councilor Collins, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Collins? Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, we move on now to item number five, which is open forum. At this time, any member of the public may request time on the agenda for an item that is not listed, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council? Please come forward, state your name for the record, and you can address the council. Okay, seeing that there is no member of the public speaking during open forum, I believe City Manager Brusino has a COVID-19 update to provide.
Thank you, councilmembers, at the last regular meeting, city council asked that I give a regular COVID update of items and things happening here in the community, the following information that I'll report on tonight was from the South Dakota Department of Health, as well as professionals from SDSU, the hospital, and other clinics. Brookings has done a great job over the past few days, as we have no new cases, we did have three new cases on Sunday, over the past weeks, I would specifically note, July 7th through 20th, there was a large spike, and a number, quite a few number of testing that occurred during that timeframe, because of this, and my assumption is, it was the July 4th area timeframe that caused that large spike, testing is now about five days lagging, we do have seven active cases here in Brookings County, in July, we were at about 4.9% of positivity, which, which we do try to strive to attain a percentage below 5%. Good news is, the seven-day rolling average percentage is a positivity of 3.6%, which is a decrease. We do have 11 total positive cases so far, of which 104 have recovered, thus, seven active cases, and altogether, we've tested 2,401, which have, I'm sorry, we have 2,401 tests that came back negative, we are in Level One, which is Hospitalization Bed Management Plan, which notes that there'd be one through seven patients in the hospital, which is relatively low in their plan, we do have zero deaths, and we are still in substantial community spread for Brookings County. We did receive, or have 14 cases over the last 14 days in Brookings County, but once again, of the last 14 days, there were three days where we had no positives. Of interest, the most, on most weekends, we do receive low numbers for, across the state of South Dakota, but this last week was relatively high, with 90 positives for the state of South Dakota, 20 of these cases were at age 60 and above, which is unique, and it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. Daily, during that timeframe of July 7th through the 20th, we were receiving daily increases of testing of about 90 to 100 a day, and that's between the hospital and the various clinics, because of the testing that had increased during that timeframe, testing results are about five days out, and what I understand is contract tracing is about another five to seven days beyond that. Over the past seven days, though, we have dropped in the total number of testing, which is a good thing to see overall. More regionally, Sioux Falls had more cases than the rest of South Dakota over the last weekend, this hasn't been the case since about mid-May, at the next meeting, staff will present the city's plan, which will be in draft form right now, that incorporates the various ordinances we have available, as well as thresholds or metrics that would be, we've utilized to move between those, so that'll be more information to come at the next meeting.
Thank you, Paul, councilors, do you have any questions for the city manager?
I had a question, just about maybe resource utilization within the organization, as far as how much police department time and how much staff time within the city government is being spent on these COVID-related questions regarding our ordinances.
I, I would say it's relatively low, I know this last weekend, we did have the police department check one business, we did have a complaint on, once again, if residents are out there and they see these businesses where the employees aren't wearing masks, those businesses specifically are bars, restaurants, and salons, a lot of people assume retailers, those employees are supposed to wear masks, that's not the case, they're just supposed to have a divider between the cashier and the, and the customer, but when we do get calls, we address them immediately, and so, we did have one call this weekend, found that there were no issues, and that was at a local bar restaurant, other than that, we receive very little calls, but we encourage citizens, once again, to either call us or use our Engage Brookings app, which is, allows people to contact us 24/7 on issues like this.
Okay, we have no contracts and change orders, so I'll move on to the first reading of ordinances. In a first reading, the title of the ordinance is read, no vote is required on the first reading of an ordinance, public comment and council discussion are permitted, the date for the second reading and the public hearing is also announced. Item 7A, introduction and first reading on ordinance 19-012, an ordinance rezoning the east 50 feet of Lot A of Lot 4, Block 1, at 829 Second Street South, Lot B of Lot 4, Block 1, at 831 Second Street South, and Lot C of Lot 4, Block 1, at 915 Second Street South, all in Skinner's Third Edition, from a residence R-22 family to a business B-3 heavy district, a public hearing will be held on August 11th, 2020.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public, ordinance 20-012 is an ordinance rezoning three residential properties on Second Street South, near Madera Avenue, the applicants are looking at some redevelopment opportunities, the rezoning request is consistent with our comprehensive plan, which identifies that area as a future urban, high-intensity use, and the B3 district does fit within those guidelines, the Planning Commission reviewed this and recommends approval on a six to, six to zero vote, and I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Director Struck? Hearing none, I'll move on to item seven. Oh, sorry, I'll call for a public comment, are there any public comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to item 7B, which is introduction and first reading on ordinance 19-013, an ordinance pertaining to a conditional use permit pertaining to establishing a concrete plant on Lot 2A, Block 3, Tellcamp Industrial Edition, a public hearing will be held on August 11th, 2020. Director Struck?
Once again, the applicants are proposing the establishment of a concrete plant, it is required through our zoning ordinance, to be approved through a conditional use permit, the location is in the Tellcamp Industrial Park, on the east side of the interstate, just south of Prince Drive, and west of 32nd Avenue. This was an item that was reviewed by the Development Review Team, as well as the Planning Commission, and both recommend approval. Commission, and both recommend approval of the conditional use permit to establish a concrete operation. I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Do any members of the public have a question for Director Struck? Hearing none, any members of the council have questions on item 7B? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to item 7C, which is Introduction and First Reading on Ordinance 19-014, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 94, Zoning Pertaining to Section 94-399.1 Buffer Yards. A public hearing will be held on August 11th, 2020.
All right, ordinance 20-014 is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to add additional language in regards to buffer yards. And currently, we have regulations in place that kind of protects residential uses. So for example, if you have a commercial or industrial-type use that butts up to a residential district property line, there's a certain distance required. It ranges anywhere from 25 feet up to 50 feet, of which you really can't do anything within that area except for plant grass. What staff is proposing is an amendment that provides some flexibility and some options to property owners that are in these types of situations, and the overall intent is to try and achieve better design. We feel that right, wrong, or indifferent, in the past, this 50-foot or 40-foot buffer requirement was really nothing more than just grass that you had to mow. You couldn't utilize it. You couldn't have a parking lot, a structure of any sort, or an access drive within that area, and it really didn't provide any protection other than distance from the adjacent residential property. So what we're proposing is, we continue to allow that option to property owners, but if they choose to go less, we look at vertical screening and utilize landscaping, plantings, fencing, berming, shrubs, as a screening mechanism to help a little bit with that buffer, but to help with that visual intrusion into, or onto the adjacent residential property. And so there's different types of buffers. We broke them down into like a type A, B, and C, and so they vary. So, you know, depending on whether it's a parking lot or an actual building structure. And so we felt that a parking lot was maybe less intrusive onto a residential property because those cars may not be there every day, 24 hours a day. They're mobile, they move around, and from a sightline perspective, it's a little bit low-level type activity going on there. Whereas when you get into a structure, it's permanent. It's there long-term, has a much greater impact on adjacent property, can cast shadows, obstructs your visible sightlines and things like that. But at the same time, felt that the current regulations were maybe a little restrictive. And so we wanted to provide some flexibility, and so there's some tables that are set up. Jake, I don't know if you have an example, exhibit? So here's an example of a buffer yard example. And this is a residential property to the north, the existing use. The red dash line would serve as the property line. And so if you were looking at a parking lot, in this particular case, a type C would allow the parking lot to be within 20 feet of that residential property line. But for every 100 feet, you'd be required to have six trees and 14 shrubs planted within that area. The intent is to try and break up those sightlines, also help a little bit with glare that maybe would come from headlights and such. There is kind of a purple dash line. That, in this case, is the current requirement of 50-foot, where you would not be able to have anything within that area other than trees, grass, or just blank space. You wouldn't be able to have parking lots, drive aisles, or a building of any sort. So that's kind of the example there. Like I mentioned previously, we're allowing the flexibility that if somebody has enough space, they can certainly maintain that buffer yard distance. That's currently in place of 50 feet or 40 feet, or even, I think it goes down to 25 feet, depending on the zoning district that it's in. But for those that maybe have more constrained sites, maybe not as much land to work with, that if they take, on the front end, with more design consideration, that we would maybe allow a little bit alleviation from our traditional zoning requirements. And that's where the buffer yards came in, and looking at, as long as they're willing to do those additional landscaping requirements, that they can maybe get a little bit closer to that residential property line. I believe the smallest distance that we allow is 10 feet from the property line to a parking lot. In some instances, depending on the intensity of the use, they're automatically required to install a six-foot privacy fence along the property line, just to help provide, minimize that impact onto the adjacent residential use. So with that, that's a quick overview and summary. I'd stand for any questions that you may have.
Do any members of the public have questions for Director Struck? All right, hearing none, members of the council have questions?
I have one. I just wanted to know how you intend to educate property owners about this and these changes. When will they be introduced to this table and this information?
You know, it's a lot of, as proposals come forward, that's really our opportunity to educate them on that. You know, here are some ideas, some concepts you can look at. You know, we could go back to the rezoning that is occurring. The first reading was tonight. That is a case where, based upon the current regulations, one of the lots that was proposed to be rezoned is only being rezoned because there's a residential property next door to them, and that one lot, based upon the current regulations, is completely useless. And so it's kind of on a case-by-case basis, as people, you know, come in or are looking at doing projects, looking at how they can utilize their property is kind of the primary means of when we get an opportunity to address some of these issues with them.
And would any of it be retroactive? Let's say that there's a buffer yard in place today that is the larger one. If an owner wanted to constrict that or, you know, go more vertical, could they do that?
Yes, they could certainly make it, we wouldn't automatically make it retroactive, but if they wanted to come do add-on addition or wanted to reconfigure their site, they certainly would have that ability to do so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Niemeyer?
So this would be on the blessing of the adjacent landowner also, then? Or does that, does the neighbor get to chime in on this?
As it's proposed, it depends on the type of use. So most of our uses, if they're permitted or permitted special use, as long as they meet the provisions of the ordinance, they're allowed to do it. If it's a conditional use, then there is a public hearing process. But most of the time, with these landscaping setbacks like this, the buffer yards, that's not associated with a conditional use. So.
All right, thank you.
This is Patty, and mine isn't a question, it's a comment, but I want to thank you. I think that this is exciting and that it's going to offer us real aesthetic improvements in our community. So thank you to everyone who worked on it.
This is Holly, and I think perhaps the question that Councilman Niemeyer asked, in some ways, answers my question, but I'm curious to know, would these new setbacks be kind of just automatic setbacks in the design plans, or would there be a process they would have to go through in order to get that smaller amount of setback? I'm thinking, would there have to be an approval for the smaller setback, or would that just be the new standard?
That could be the new standard, provided they meet the screening requirements, whether it be through fencing, tree planting, shrubs, berming, but it would be the new standard. They have the flexibility to maintain the current extended buffer yards, in which case our, the history that we have in Brookings, when we get into those, it becomes nothing more than just 50 feet of nothing but just grass that grows that they mow, and there's no trees or anything. And so it provides a distance buffer, but somebody that looks out their residential property, they, unless they take it upon themselves to do certain screening provisions on their own property, they're going to look at whatever use is next door. We're not finding that the applicants that are associated with these business and commercial uses are really incorporating any of those landscaping features.
I had a question about the proposed buffer yard. I certainly see the aesthetic value in the proposal. I wonder if you'd given thought to maybe the ramifications from a sound barrier, or do you think the 20-feet proposed buffer yard is adequate in terms of any sound concerns that a neighboring residential landowner might have?
We did discuss that internally. We were concerned when you have maybe some of those types of uses that maybe operate a little bit later into the evening, that maybe are commonly associated with a little bit of a louder type of use, crowd, individuals, whether they're entering or leaving the establishments. And that's one of the things where we thought, with those types of use, it's automatic triggering mechanism for maybe a six-foot privacy fence, and then you also incorporate some of that vertical vegetation. Trees really do a wonder in helping modify some of the sound, so it doesn't carry as far. But it is something that is still, it's still going to be present. But it's what can we do to try and do our best to help alleviate that impact?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. From staff's perspective, you did a phenomenal job, you and your staff. When I think about this and the efforts of sustainability, right? We only have, what, 10 years' worth of land left here in the community of Brookings. So from a business perspective, this allows a business to fully maximize their site. At the same time, it allows us to increase aesthetics between neighbors, residential, as well as businesses. And the key that Mike had talked about is that now, or previously, you might have had a fence and maybe some grass. Now there's requirements, if they put in the trees and shrubs, they have to maintain those as part of the code. And so we'll make sure that if there is any violations, unless I'm speaking incorrectly, that they will have to maintain those accordingly to what was required within the code when they developed the site. So we're adding more green space, or not so much space, but vertically with trees, and it's cheaper to the developer in the long run as well, rather than just putting up a fence. Green space, landscaping is, I've often heard, a little bit less expensive. It costs more maintenance, but it adds greater value, I think, to the overall neighborhood.
That is a good point, and thank you for clarifying that.
This is Holly, and I have one more question. Was there any consideration given in regards to what this might do to water runoff? Because as I think about lessening our actual square footage of green space, I think that that also means there's going to be less permeable surface for water runoff. And I'm just curious if there's been any study as to what that might do, especially to the adjacent landowners, and if that might push additional water to neighbors?
There haven't been studies that we've conducted internally on this particular subject. I can provide an experience from a couple of city projects that we were involved in, which we had pretty dry weather and significant tree removal, and within 24 hours, we were running pumps because when we took the trees out, they were absorbing quite a bit of the water. So adding trees in, it's a great way to help with the tree canopy, as well as the root systems to absorb water. Some of the additional green space is, helps as well. But there is the potential that you are adding more impervious surfacing, and so there's kind of a trade-off there.
Mike, maybe you can comment on this. With most of these developments, they also have to provide some type of drainage plan, which if they incorporated too large of a parking lot over a certain size, they would have to provide that drainage plan to account for some of that. My assumption is they probably could utilize this green space if they decided to use best management practices of a bio-swell or what have you within these buffer yards to maximize their lot potential development. Would that be the case?
Yes and no, and it kind of depends. And so there's, you know, not a great answer there, but if it's over an acre, the storm drainage criteria manual requirements automatically kick in. If it's less than an acre, they're not necessarily required to. We also look at kind of our baseline for establishing a site. We go back to 2006, which is when we first adopted a lot of our drainage criteria for the city of Brookings, and we look at what percentage of that site was impervious in 2006 compared to what it is now. And so sometimes, it might just be, the only thing that they're really required to manage is the difference if it's increasing. A lot of times, there's either staying the same. And in some instances, we've seen projects where they've actually decreased the amount of surfacing and didn't have to really do anything to manage that water. But it's kind of more site-specific. We do encourage best management practices when you get into our landscaping, and so any opportunities we can, rain gardens, bio swales, just to do a better job of managing that water as it enters and leaves the site.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mike. Before we move on to our second readings, I just wanted to note that, you know, last year, we kind of revised the way we handle first readings to allow for public comment and council conversation. I think tonight's a good example of the dynamic conversation that can happen, and better prepare us for a second reading where we'd be asked to take actual action on such an ordinance. So I appreciate the process, and I think tonight is a good example of how we can really vet an ordinance before we're asked to take action at a subsequent meeting. With that, let's move into second hearing and potential action. Item 8E is a public hearing and potential action on request for an on-off sale malt license for BVG Backyard Grill at 1805 Sixth Street in the Village Square Edition. Kathy Alenkiewicz, owner. And Bonnie Foster, City Clerk, will review the item for the council.
Mayor, councilmembers, and the public, yes, an on-off sale malt license has been received from Backyard Grill. All required documentation has been submitted. If approved, the application will be forwarded to the State Department of Revenue for final action and issuance of the license. This license would be in effect beginning in August of 2020, and then subject to annual renewal. A representative from Backyard Grill is present if you have any questions.
Thank you, Bonnie. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this item? Seeing no comment, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. Do the council have any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Tilton Burn?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item 8F is the public hearing and action on Resolution 20-051, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an operating agreement for on-off sale wine license for BVG Backyard Grill located at 1805 Sixth Street in the Village Square Edition. Kathy Alenkiewicz, owner. Bonnie Foster, the City Clerk, will review this item.
Mayor, councilmembers, and the audience, Resolution 20-51 will authorize that City Manager to enter into a wine operating agreement for 1805 Sixth Street. All required documentation has been submitted. If approved, this resolution will allow the City Manager to enter into that operating agreement for the first five years of the 10-year cycle of that agreement, which would make it effective through 2025. The application would then be forwarded to the State Department of Revenue for final action and issuance of the license. The license would be effective through December 31st of 2020. The license would be effective through December 31st of 2020 and subject to annual review.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this item? Seeing no public comment, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does the council have any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Let's move on to item nine, which is other business. Item nine A is a discussion and possible action on 2021 outside agency, the application and prioritization. I think Jake Meshke, the assistant city manager, is ready to present this item.
Actually, I'll take this one for Jake. Go for it. At the June city council meeting, city council requested staff bring back the city and the United Way application for comparison. The packet, within the packet, staff did include the applications and analysis of differences of these two applications. And this, of course, is for the 2021 funding process, which will be new this year, which will have the United Way provide an application process. Social service agencies can make that request from United Way for either United Way funds or city funds. United Way will then make a determination recommendation to city council. The city council will be able to review all applications, their recommendation, and make the final say later this fall. So within the review of the applications of the city's specific application, there are 19 questions on ours. Of them, of the 19 questions, 10 questions were very similar to the United Way questions. United Way also have notified us that they'll make adjustments of three other questions to align with the city's application. And before you deny it, it's kind of the breakdown of how that works. There are six questions that staff does recommend eliminating. These questions are good, but not necessarily necessary to determine the funding of social service agencies. Real quickly, I'll run through them. Question number six asks of other sources of revenues available, including grants. Number seven, ask for sales tax implications. Number nine, ask for overall impact to the organizational budget. 12C asks for the comparison of over time of the services. 12D, the organizational service efficiencies and effectiveness. And 12E asks for the reliability of verifying the use. Now, we are recommending elimination of these specific questions, specifically they don't add value. But a lot of these questions asked are answered throughout the United Way application through other forms and processes. So that's the first part of this recommendation tonight, is to go ahead and move forward with these recommended changes. But furthermore, the United Way is asking for council direction to prioritize three of the top needs that we note within our application. Now, I broke it down for you guys tonight. Those with asterisks, the arts and culture, economic development, preservation, history, and park and recreation, are for the most part funded through a separate part of our budget. And so therefore, it's up to council whether we want to continue to consider these as potentially receiving funding through United Way. But the direction tonight will help the United Way make a recommendation to you later this fall. So I did talk to council members individually. And what I've heard from council is that the greatest areas for consideration are affordable housing. Make sure I got this right. Affordable housing, youth development, and education and literacy with diversity right behind it. And so those are the three or four major areas that I heard from council. And so I would request council tonight, make a motion to go ahead and approve the application as presented or any suggested changes. And whether or not those three or four areas are your prioritized area, at least as a jumping off point for the United Way to start considering those applications. And Heidi is here with the United Way to answer any questions. I think the primary reason why we're looking for that direction from city council is this year more than ever, because of the United Way process, because of COVID, you're going to be receiving a lot more requests from outside agencies. And so any direction you can give United Way will be well-received. And I think it'll make it for a better process when it comes forward this fall. So Heidi is here also to answer any questions you might have.
Can I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing no public comment. Is there council discussion?
This is Holly and first I have a clarifying question and then a little bit of discussion. My clarifying question is, the motion on the table, is that to adjust the application as proposed and accept the priority areas?
Correct.
And can we, can you state again what the three priority areas were?
Sure. It's affordable housing, youth development, education, literacy, and diversity is the number four.
And so we're identifying four areas?
Yes, specifically I requested three, but that fourth one came in very close. Just to give you an analysis of my internal discussing with individual council members, the affordable housing received the highest. And then youth development and education literacy were tied for the second.
Thank you for that clarification. In terms of discussion, I guess I would say for myself, I did not actually contribute to kind of weighing what my top three areas were. And I want to give just a little bit of background as to why I didn't necessarily pick three areas. In my mind, in looking at this list, I feel like these are the areas that we have kind of narrowed this pool of funding down to. And for me, it's very difficult to kind of cherry pick three or four areas out of this list that was, that's been established, knowing that for me, sometimes the decision as to where the priorities lie depend greatly on the individual applications that come in, the, you know, specific needs of the community at that time, and comparing the various applications. And so it's a little bit difficult for me to just say, well, we're just going to focus on these three or four areas. And I do want to clarify, I think I had asked previously to you, Paul, we will be able to kind of revisit these areas annually, is that right? And each year we would pick what our top three or four priorities would be?
I think that'd be a great, I'm sorry. I think that'd be a great recommendation for city council because every year the needs of this community changes. And I think Heidi at United Way is a great partner and could help us understand what those needs are. But council should reevaluate those every year about this time through the budget process.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions or comments from council?
I guess I would just ask Heidi, since you're here, if you feel that that answer, those recommendations will be helpful and give you the guidance that you need.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. I'm Heidi Gulickson with United Way. Having the prioritization helps us to understand what the goals of the council really want to be achieving. It doesn't mean that a, some, an organization that wasn't one of those top priorities doesn't get funding. It just helps us to understand what those priorities are. And it can be a weighted kind of number system to make sure that those that are the priorities are rising to the top a bit. But again, through the matrix and the scoring, it just helps to have some sort of priority looking because as Paul mentioned, there's probably going to be more requests that come in than the dollars that are going to be available. And so being able to prioritize that, we would, as with United Way, we would love to typically fund everything at a full ask that comes in, but we don't necessarily have the resources to do that every time, just like the city may not have the resources to do that. So if we have those clear cut priorities out there, knowing that really all of these, like Holly said, are a priority for the council and for the city. But to be able to do that weighting system really does help in the whole process. Thank you. Thank you.
This is Patty. Heidi, could you help clarify? I know when I used to be submitting those applications, we were never sure. And I don't know if you have a policy on it, but will you look at applications? And I think you kind of alluded to it in your answer, that you won't necessarily fund the full request. Let's say they ask for 50,000 and you, you know, based on your funds available and the other requests might say, we'll fund you, but only at 30,000. Or is it just a make or break deal where you either fund them or you don't?
Typically, we try to fund at the fullest amount available, but sometimes that's at a 98% or an 80%. It just depends on the dollars and the request. But typically, if there is the request, excuse me, is the request and it's a valid application and it's a need in the community, then we try to fund at least a portion of that at the highest level that we can, is how it works within the United Way system.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions for Heidi or anyone else, since Heidi's at the mic right now? Okay, thank you. So before we move on to vote, I just want to reaffirm for everyone that the motion that is on the table is to approve the outside agency application, including the priority areas that were defined this evening. We do have a motion and a second, so if the city clerk would please call the roll.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, that takes us on to city council member introduction of topics for future discussion. I should just note that as of right now, we have a meeting scheduled on August 11th, which would include a 5:00 PM study session, which was slated to be a budget work session number three, but did not necessarily have a defined topic. Does the council feel like they want to conduct a study session on the budget that evening? I don't know that there is anything more that the staff right now needs to present to us. It would be more like the questions we may still have or budget-related topics we would bring to the session. We've heard from the staff, they're recommended, the recommendations related to the budget.
From my perspective, I don't see a need for that study session. Happy to participate if others feel different.
Would this be enough time to, for staff to respond to the questions on the video lottery issue? Or do we need to give them farther out, push it farther out?
I think since we mentioned tonight, especially with the applicants here, that we were going to have it August 18th, I think it'd be best if we could have it at that point in time. If council's desires to have it the 11th, we could push the city attorney and city clerk, because I know they would be doing a lot of the heavy lifting. I know they've done a lot of the research, so I'm sure we could make it available too. So it's entirely up to the council what you would like to do.
I'm good with leaving it to the 18th.
Do we need a formal motion to cancel the study session on August 11th? Or will we just remove it from our schedule?
We'll just make that amendment on the consent agenda for the 11th, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So the council is in agreement that we'll remove the budget work session scheduled for August 11th, but we will hold a study session on August 18th and the topic will be video lottery. Other items on our regular meeting schedule for August 11th are the second readings and public hearings on the ordinances we heard this evening. Are there other topics for future meetings that a counselor would like to introduce this evening?
I would. Councilmember Wendell, this is Patty. I would like to ask for an update from staff on where we are at with the, I don't know what we call it, the project on 15th and 7th South. Councilmember Niemeyer brought it up earlier. And I think it's time, we haven't had an update on where we're at in that project and when we feel we can move forward with it.
And that was the affordable housing project in part, correct?
Well, that was in part, but it's, yeah, the whole plan for when we're going to open that up. And yes, then how, especially our land usage will happen. But where we're at in our negotiations, as I understand it, we've been held up a little bit because of some drainage issues. So I think just a full update would be good.
Okay, can I treat that as a motion, Councilmember Bacon?
Yes.
I'll second it.
And a second, okay. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion on that topic? Hearing none. City clerk, please call the roll.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Okay, so that item will be on a future.
I'd just like to make a comment, you know, if we're going to get some presentation on this, I know that there's been some talk about financing for this and what our options are on this also. Because I know right now we have a budget where we have money set aside for this, but there has been talk about incremental financing, that kind of thing. So maybe part of that would be part of it.
Staff understand that request?
Yes, we'll internally figure out what we can and cannot bring because there is still some negotiation going on there. It might be a delicate discussion, but at the same time, we'll respect your request and try to have some financing options.
Any other topics for future meeting agendas, council?
This is Holly and as we go through our budget process, one of the things that kind of stands out to me is the dollar amount that we award to our school district and how we come to that dollar amount. And so I'd like to make a motion that at a future study session, we have a discussion about how the city funding for the school district comes about, how we come to that dollar amount and how that's budgeted.
Is there a second? All right, it has been, it's been moved and seconded. Council, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We'll have the city clerk call the roll.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. So we've got a couple of items we know will be coming on future agendas. And staff will keep us informed on when those items are ready to share with the council. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The meeting is adjourned.